Stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for the City of Greensburg's ADA transition plan. Do we need a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm over.
Okay, motion's been made to open it. Is there a second? Second by Rick. All those in favor, say a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed. Ron wanted to make a few comments here in the public hearing about the plan that he has presented.
Thank you. I would like to speak tonight in favor of the transition plan as presented. This is the result of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, under Title II. And the requirement is that we have a current transition plan. Our previous plan was 2011, so here we are at 2023, and it's time that we update it. So I encourage that update.
Is there anyone from the audience here to speak on the City of Greensburg's ADA transition plan? You're hearing and seeing none? Would take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Motion's been made by Darrell, second by Vieta.
All those in favor, say a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed. Today is Tuesday, April 11, 2023, the time being 6:30 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room. May you please call the roll.
Jamie Kane. Rick Anderson.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Vieta McKenzie.
Here.
Darrell Poling.
Here.
Jamie did notify me that he had an emergency out-of-work conflict. You all should have received a copy of the minutes from March 14, 2023, and he added additions or corrections. If not, take a motion to approve those as presented.
I'm over.
Motion's been made by Kevin. Second by Rick. All those in favor, say a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, under old business, I've invited back after some further conversations. We had a special meeting with Rick and Mark a few weeks ago, six weeks ago or so. They've made some changes. Come on up, gentlemen. And they have some new information and a little bit of discussion about these energy savings contracts and guarantees. So we will let them hand out the new documents and proceed with the presentation.
Thank you again, Rick Anderson with Veragee, Mark Frost with Veragee. A little bit smaller group this time, but it's nice to see you all again. I first wanted to, real quick, before I get into my presentation, so there, I don't know if you guys get the Indy Star. I get it online, but I don't know if you guys ever look at the Indy Star at all. But to kind of accentuate what we're talking about here with our energy conservation program, there was a, there was an article in the Indy Star last Friday, advocates worry Indiana lawmakers just give utilities a blank check, put consumers at risk. If you read this article, this will even tell you a little bit more about the utility situation, which we've already kind of talked about when we were first here. But it really kind of solidifies the fact that how the utility situation in Indiana is not good from the consumer's perspective, either at home or from a business perspective. So we want to review your handouts. We want to review, so we've met with the mayor and Ron a few times since then, and we've actually, we've come to you with a little bit different program and project than we had the first time, and it's to your benefit because it's going to give you some more savings and some more money back from the Inflation Reduction Act, which we talked about the first time we're here. Mark, you want to review real quick, you know, the differences in the utility rate differences?
Yeah. The project is basically the same one that we brought before, except for one thing. The waste treatment plant, we increased the size of the solar array at the waste treatment plant from 30% to 96% offset, so almost offsetting all the electric at the waste treatment plant. And the reason that we're doing that now is that the, Duke has submitted to the IURC a new rate, if you will, for if your system overproduced and sent kilowatt-hours back to the grid, they've increased what they'll pay for that to nine cents, 9.04 cents. And that's way better than it was before. It was like four cents before. And so we've, that incentivizes you to put more solar in because you'll get paid for it if you do send it back to the grid. So in a way, you can, it's almost like net metering, and it's almost like you can use the grid for your battery because, you know, you set, you sell it back to them for nine cents, and then you pay like about 10 cents for it when you buy electric. That is very favorable, especially with the Inflation Reduction Act, the IRA, because the government is going to offset about 40% of the solar. So I put together two cash flows for you. One is at the nine cents that they will pay you for overages or excess production, but I also put one together that's a little more conservative at six cents per kilowatt-hour excess production. And all of that's in there. You can see the solar array, example of a solar array where the waste treatment plant is a lot larger than it was before. Everything else is the same. We're still looking at streetlight upgrades to LED, smaller solar arrays on this building as well as the police and the adult center. But overall, Rick can talk to you about the savings and what that means.
Yeah, so the, so just to review again, you know, we talked about the solar arrays and sizes, and then also a project cost a little bit over $6.4 million. Again, at the conservative rate, you're going to be getting back 13 million and some change, and at the higher rate, 14 million and some change, and that the federal incentive is going to basically give you back over $2 million. So again, we talked about this, I think, the last time I was here, but this is kind of the perfect storm as far as timing on doing these things because, again, with the rate increases, and that's not going to change, that article I was telling you about really accentuates the fact that the utility situation in Indiana, it's, we're still a regulated state, so these utility companies have the, they can basically just raise your rates. They have to go to the IURC a lot of times, but now they're doing a lot of these rate changes with riders. You guys have probably noticed on your bills at home even where the rate changes, there's a fair amount of rate increase, but also on these riders, that's how they get it through without having to go to the IURC. So the average rate increase has been 6% over the years, but what we're trying to help you guys do, but the amount that we offset is not applicable to any rate changes. So that's, that's the nice part about it. And guys, really look at this as a legacy project where, you know, we talked about these 20-year savings things, and I'm probably not going to be here in 20 years, and you guys probably aren't going to be either, but you're leaving a legacy for the City of Greensburg to really have that, hey, we left the city in really good shape from a utilities perspective. So I don't know if you have any questions moving forward.
What is, excuse me, the previous plan was 2.7 million.
Correct.
Now it's up to six. What's the difference in the?
The only difference is the larger wastewater treatment.
It's costing that much more.
The wastewater treatment plant is about 60% of your electric bill for the whole city, all the city buildings and facilities. And so that's, it also has some land next to it, large piece of land, that makes it cost-effective to put as much solar there as you can in one spot. So the larger the solar array, the lower the cost per kilowatt goes. But, but yeah, that, nothing else changed, just the size of that solar array.
I'm just having a hard time figuring it more than double just for everything else in the city.
Well, we were only going to offset 30-something percent on that first going down. This time, we're going to offset.
It's hard for me to.
No, no, I understand that, but again, remember, almost, you're almost offsetting your whole bill, okay? And that's, again, you're offsetting almost 60% of the city's entire utility spend.
Now, I got questions, Zee?
Yep.
Any further expansion? Is this going to bother, bother you? I know the city's going to start growing. Is this going to take up room for?
Yeah, I mean, it could potentially hinder growth. Yeah.
The, the graphic, and I'll make this comment in defense of Rick maybe a little bit, we did talk about the EQ basin expansion in the future, so this graphic doesn't really represent that. We talked about shifting it to the south.
Yeah. Spot that, ship or roof, or the water.
We have enough space out there that we feel pretty confident. We have, you have enough space out there, we feel pretty confident with moving around, what we talked about, it's still going to get you the same result, so. So again, guys, next step is advertising. So as I say before, if you guys are committed to a project, now again, we kind of gave you the kitchen sink here. You don't have to do the kitchen sink, but this is financially the best thing for you guys to do moving forward with the IRA benefit and also offsetting as much of your utility bills as we possibly can.
What's the life of the solar panels?
The solar panels have a warranty of 25 years. They will last longer than that. They do degrade.
Is it a pro-rated warranty or full warranty up to the life level, 25 years?
It's a warranty that the performance will stay within a certain level. It's, they will degrade about a half a percent a year for the 20 years, or 20, 25 years. So it's a full warranty for the production. In other words, if it doesn't produce what they said. And we took in that half a percent of degradation in our, in our calculations. And what normally happens is it degrades down to about year 20, and then they level off and just keep producing.
We tell people 80% is typically with the life of the panels is as bad as it's going to get.
About 80%, yeah.
Exactly.
There are non-moving parts, you know, there's no moving parts to them. They're just a crystal that's grown and sliced really thin, and when sun hits the side of it, it produces electric. So there's really not much that can go wrong with it, so that's why the warranties are so long. There's also inverters in the system. Inverters take, the panels make DC power, like your battery in your car, and the inverters take it to AC power so you can hook it to the grid. And those inverters have a 15-year warranty on them. They're probably the, the most likely thing to fail first, but they're probably only 2% or 3% of the cost of the solar array, so, you know, it's not a big portion of the money.
And we're also, again, the other thing to remember is we're guaranteeing savings from this, so whatever savings numbers we come up with as far as on a contract, if they tell you we're going to save you a dollar, only save you 90 cents, we have to write you a check, so.
And that's, and that's audited through the state of Indiana each year.
We have to get your bills and audit that with the state.
And to make a general statement, probably worthy of noting, there's still also, we, we use this still every year to land ply our bio solids.
Okay.
So we have to deal with a farmer that's kind of local to the area that we land up these solids every single year in this field.
Okay, so you take your solids over there and they pile it in?
Yeah, just wanted to note that, so.
And then the roof on the police department and the senior citizens, is that big for these costs?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't changed that here yet, the electric facilities.
And re-roof for?
I don't, I don't think we did include the roof.
No, if, if a.
I forgot.
No, we did not.
No, if a roof saves.
It's not, I mean, for the size of this project, it's not going to be a lot. And I got to say, this is budget numbers, this is budget numbers, plus or minus 25% or so, or 15%. So, you know, as the project goes on, those numbers will be refined.
To, to that point.
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit again the process? Because we're not, skip to the end, if this is something you're, the council is interested in taking more investigative work towards, we will have to do a lot of advertising and people will submit requests for proposals to which then we would review, and if we choose to accept one of those at that time, we would have more accurate numbers and a real number.
Yeah, you advertise, you advertise twice in two local papers, responses are due back 37 days from the first day up, but it's an RFQ, so you would, you would be picking somebody based upon qualifications for the opportunity. We've already given you some numbers, so you have our numbers. But then you would pick a vendor and move forward with the project after the fact, so.
Where we could hammer out more details about like the roof and those kinds of.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there'll still be a period of engineering and design that will go on before you have the final price, and then only at the final price would you work it to a contract or something, so you're not obligated up to that point.
We've done a very similar project, I think we talked about that, at the City of Shelbyville. We impacted, I think, 15 different sites, from fire stations to wastewater to animal shelter, their pub, public pool, and they've been, they've been very pleased, and we way overextended our savings with those guys than we projected, so.
The estimated, estimated project costs, does it include the maintenance contract that represented the previous meeting?
If you look at the cash flow, there's a line in there that says maintenance contract, and that's what's billed in.
Yeah, I know. I asked Rick if I should have put it.
I'm sorry.
Levmas of Danes, and Wink says you this PDF, you want to see it better?
But, and it's a full service maintenance contract, so anything from an inverter to a panel to anything, and it's really important to monitor these systems as well because, you know, if there's a financial guarantee that's, that's in play, you know, if you've got a bank of panels that's down for a week, you're not going to find out about it until you look at your bill at the end of the month. We know about it instantaneously, and we're, we're going to respond and fix it immediately.
Yeah, we, we have a group that's monitors it daily and gets error codes and things like that to fix problems, but we also, once a month, everybody in the office pretty well sits down, which it was today, this morning. So we sat down and went through, has to be about 100 solar arrays that, that we went through and said, okay, why is this one a little bit low this, this month, you know? And, oh, it's not low, it's just a communication error, and it's getting fixed, and, you know, those sort of things. We work through all those things all the time.
That's right, the maintenance, the maintenance contract you propose is not in total project cost, but it's in your cash flow analysis.
Yeah.
So therefore, it's included in your, in your payback of 9.7 years.
Yeah, and it's optional. I mean, it's whatever you want to do. Well, it, it goes in as an expense, so it is in that cash flow.
Yeah, I see how you.
On payback. Now, we did, in year, we projected, it's not certain how the government's going to pay that IRA money back, but we projected it to be in year two, so if you look at year two, there's a big chunk of money that says comes in from, from the, it's under the line, utility rebates and federal incentives, $2,383. Then if you look on down, we take part of that and put it in a retained funds so that, that your, your savings and your payments pay are squared away and your positive cash flow all the way, and you still have $1,316,000, if you're looking at the same ones, I mean, there's two of them, $1,316,000 left at that point that you can do something else with besides, you know.
We had talked about potentially with a new fire station or new street facility, putting it on there as well.
And then by year 20, it's positive cash flow, flow of $2.5 million. And we guarantee the production by the state code and submit reports to the state yearly showing that we'd submitted it, or that we have accomplished it, and we come back to you for a signature on that report, as well as give you reports continually on that.
It's in the back of your packet, but if you'd like to review it, it's very boilerplate. If there's something that you don't like in there, we can take it out. If you want to add something, we can do that as well, but that's a, that's a document that is used pretty frequently.
Okay. We have several locations with similar sized solar arrays to this, some were bigger, some were smaller. We'd be happy to take you to any of those if you wanted to see them, all the way from, we could take you over to the airport, all those solar arrays we put in and monitor all the time, to, there's one beautiful one down in southern Indiana, St. Mine Red Archaby, that is a little bit bigger than this one that we're looking at for the waste treatment plant, and they're very happy with theirs.
So for point of clarification, as we maybe wrap up the conversation this evening, the idea is that over the next 25 years, this through energy savings is estimated to save us 20 million on, on page three, but we would have an expense of about 11 million. Is that correct?
That's right.
So that leaves us about an eighth over the next 25 years. It's, it's not like new money in, but it's less expense out.
Correct.
And it's not something we're going, and that's where the federal incentives back of north of 2.3 million helped offset the cost of the project while we pay it off.
Exactly.
But then, when the payoff, if we did a 20-year note, in year 20, obviously, but even the energy savings beyond that starts to pile up the cash savings earlier than that.
You bet.
Mm-hmm.
As I mentioned, council, no decision to contract with anything, but these gentlemen have been very gracious with their time and education to Ron and I, and I, I guess I'm asking, is this something that you would like to pursue further, including the advertisement of said project that would be open to anyone in this line of work? And then we could look at requests for proposals in approximately two months, and if we see something there, we could decide to start working with someone, and if we don't like the price when we get there, we can still walk away. Obviously, there's a lot of investment on whoever's company is selected. Is that of interest? Do you want to table it for a month and give me a decision next month? Do you want us to go ahead and start the conversations, and then we can keep having them? I just need a little bit of guidance.
They call it a cost, I mean, an energy saving process, which it is, but if you look at it purely from a cost savings, 9.7 years is a terrible payback, but I mean, looking at it further, I.
I thought eventually it's going to look good, but we're so far stretched now, I can't commit to another bill with all the projects. And we've got it, but I, what happens if something happens? That's where I'm at.
We have to follow.
Yeah.
And this does not count against any other debt that you have.
Yeah, I know, but I'm looking at it from my, the way I do my expenses.
Hey, it's your project, but again.
No, I appreciate your input.
Oh, no, absolutely, but it's, it's really, it's this legacy thing that you really have to kind of get your head around the fact that, you know, 20, 25 years from now, I understand the nine-year thing. If you looked at it as a straight ROI, I mean, everybody's looking at this quick payback thing. It, it just, it, you know, with cost, it just doesn't happen, but you have to look at it further down the road, and that's what we're saying is, you're going to be getting almost 80% efficiency back for the next 25 to 30 years, and the utility company, it's going to get worse. So would you rather pay the utility company, or would you rather start making some investment into something that's going to pay back relatively quickly?
There's no quick payback in any utility. I mean, you're not doing the same thing, it takes years, but.
These guys are not doing any favors, and they're just going to keep, they're just going to keep doing it, so.
Well, you see more and more cities are doing it. I mean, it's popping up all over the place.
You bet.
So.
We're just trying to help.
I would be more in favor of taking it, taking a closer look at it, give us a month to look at it, and I, I understand the concerns from my, my friends on the other side there, but, yeah, it's not going to be a quick payback. On the other hand, it's a trend, and it's, it's a long-term investment, so I'm kind of caught in the middle here. I would like to have another month to decipher some of this.
Yeah, I'll offer up too, like Mark was saying, I'll be happy to rent a van and take you guys on a little field trip, because I think if you went to Shelbyville, talk to Mayor DeBon, and also at the Indy Airport, we take care of their central heating and cooling plant, we put that large solar array there, but after you see that and how it's operating, it's, it's a pretty effective show and tell, so I'll, I'll offer that if you guys would like to do that, we'll certainly offer.
I'll make a motion to table it for one month.
Second.
Motion's been made by Darrell, second by Vieta. Any further conversations or questions? All those in favor, say a "aye." Those opposed. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, first item under new business, we have John Bryant with the Veritas Group, who's our owner's representative for the municipal complex. He's here with the monthly updates. John has spent a decent afternoon with our teams and worked through some different things this afternoon as well, so good evening, John.
Good evening, gentlemen. Again, my name is John Bryant with the Veritas Group, here to give an update, a monthly update on where we stand on both the fire department as well as the street department in regards to construction and design. So similar to what we discussed two months ago, I'll kind of run over the same outline of what we, what we discussed last month. So in regards to construction documents and design update, we do have Stephen Kromkowski here with DLZ as well. They have submitted their 100% signed and sealed set to state for construction design release that was done last week, so we do expect to see that back from state either end of this week or next, specifically in regards to the site work and the fire station. So again, construction design release by late this week or beginning of next, and then at that point, the City of Greensburg will issue permits if everything is satisfactory, and then mobilization will begin. So I did discuss with Myron Nagum, who is a CM for the fire station, about mobilization for them, so they do plan to mobilize end of this month on the site, which is fantastic, and that'll, that'll take us on in here to the next point for schedule. So mobilization late April, like I just discussed, and then site work beginning in May, so most likely the site work contractor that is chosen for this project will most likely be mobilizing in early May. And again, that's all being vetted out right now. Bids were submitted late last week. We're going through those right now, vetting out those bids, and then hoping to abort by Friday of this week for, for all packages for the fire station as well as the site work. Now specifically in regards to the projects. Now specifically in regards to the projects in and of themselves, the fire station, again, signed and sealed documents have been released. And as I had mentioned, bids have been received. Veritas, we are continuing to still develop FFNE budgets and procurement logs alongside with chief's help. So that is something that we're still continuing to work through. We do plan to release an RFP for the FFNE portion of this project. So the city of Greensburg, you guys do belong to a pull-out membership through Sourcewell. We've typically used those for other municipalities' works and have seen very steep discounts. So we're trying to use that as much as we can for all FFNE items. So that is forthcoming, but we do plan to release an RFP to, to get the most competitive pricing for you guys. Now specifically in regards to the street department, so we, like Mayor had mentioned, we met with Runabom today to go over their ninety-five percent construction document set alongside with Mark and his team. So their intent is to release their documents by the end of next week to state for construction design release, which would be roughly around the same time that we'll be receiving them from, from the fire station, the site work packages. Obviously, the fire station is the driver for both projects as far as schedule goes. Mark's project for the street department will not anywhere go out into the spring of 2024 like we're looking at for the fire station. So we're still pushing to get those on track and on schedule, given the fact that the site work contractor will be prepping the pads for the, the street department at that point, Runabom will, will mobilize. So that will most likely be June or July when, when Runabom has a trailer out there in order to begin their work, because they have to have a pad-ready site. So moving on here to budget, the, the project again remains on budget. The GMP was set at nineteen point nine, that has not changed. Again, we are vetting numbers with, with Myron Nagum currently and should have awards by end of this week, which is fantastic. So next steps, the groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled for Saturday, May thirteenth at ten thirty. That'll be the official kickoff of the project. We're very excited to, to begin to deliver and you guys to see your, your projects come to life. So that is all that I have for tonight's update. Are there any questions?
Anything for John?
As you mentioned, Stephen, who's our architect of record, is with us this evening. He was in some meetings this afternoon as well, so thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Anything for them before they, appreciate it, and thanks for all the help.
Thanks, Council.
Up next, resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-two, which is the adoption of the transition, ADA transition plan. Welcome back, Ron.
Good evening again. As we talked before, the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety, under Title II, is kind of a living thing where we are required to have a transition plan. Our last adopted transition plan was from two thousand and eleven. Federal Highway Administration through NDOT has reminded us that it's time for a new update. You have, I believe, had in your box the transition plan and the resolution adopting it. I am chagrined to share with you that Rick did a much better job of reviewing the final version of the draft than I apparently did, because there is an error in the discussion on curb ramps. The one point one million is the estimated total cost of upgrading all existing curb ramps that are currently not compliant to standards. So I would ask that you adopt the resolution, hopefully with the understanding that I will correct that part of the transition plan.
Ron, do you know the approximate percentage of how many of the curb ramps are completed?
I do, I did, I think it was in the transition plan actually. And I'm thinking, we have made a lot of headway since we've had CCMG, which I think dates back to seventeen. I think we've been doing it for five years. We've made a lot of headway on upgrading curb ramps in doing that. I think we're around forty percent, but don't, please don't take that as possible.
Yeah, there is a list.
There is a whole list of every curb ramp in the city in the transition plan.
About five pages, I guess.
Which ones are compliant and which ones aren't?
I know with the initial adopted this, it was, there was a plan to do so many per year.
The very first version of these was somewhat terrifying to look at. Our buildings are generally in good condition. We have some questions. So you, you have an issue with door pull, you're only allowed five pounds on an interior door. Exterior doors are treated slightly different. And there's also a minimum closing time. And we need to work on some of our door closers to adjust that, or replace them if necessary. Other than that, our properties are generally in pretty good shape, with the exception of the street department, which we know what it is in the current fire department. But with our plans to replace those, they should be compliant once completed.
Any further questions for Ron on that? With the understanding that the slight change will be made as mentioned, taking motion to pass twenty-two-three dash zero-two.
Some. Moved by Daryl.
Seconded by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thanks for all your work on that, Ron. Josh Tressler. Good evening, Josh.
Good evening. Y'all should have received a, hopefully, short, but not short memo in your packet, kind of describing where we are on the email and Microsoft Office licensing and software for the city, as well as our request to upgrade and kind of modernize that. And kind of as I mentioned in the letter, here for any questions you may have for, if you'd like me to kind of run through a quick high level. I can do that here quickly. In fact, it was around January of twenty-twenty-one, we migrated from kind of a homebrew, more secure email system than we had had in, in previous years. And we migrated to a product called Zimbra. It's an open source, but a support contract-backed system for email to try to kind of modernize and get out of, or get through some of the problems. It's served us, you know, pretty well the last couple of years as far as the technical issues we were having with the old system and needing to grow and bring all of the city together. I'm not sure if many of you realize, but prior to that system, various city offices all had different email addresses. And that was part of the issue, fire department, police department, city hall, utilities, several personal accounts. So we did that in January of twenty-twenty-one. What we, you know, quickly come to realize is that system won't be a better than what we had before is just pales in comparison to kind of the modern solutions and products today, Microsoft Office, Outlook hosted email, Google accounts, I'm sure many of you use those in, in industry or in personally. So we put together kind of a proposal looking at replacing all city of Greensburg departments, providing Microsoft Office licensing, so all of the office products, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Outlook, that the offices and employees would use as well as hosted email. And I kind of threw a couple of bullet points in there. Some of the benefits to this solution more than what you currently have today, shared calendaring, shared contacts, scheduling of resources, you know, just the ability to schedule this room, for example, was nearly impossible in the system we have today. Email retention policies, secured email, OneDrive, the ability to do secure file sharing, large file sharing, you know, maybe in, in projects like this where you're working on building new buildings or need to share confidential files or personnel files and such. Single sign-on, which is really just more an ease of use for employees, as well as conference and video calling. We currently pay for the Zoom licensing, Zoom room licensing. I'm sure you've seen the cart that we've had in here before. Those are additional fees for other services that are all included in the pricing that I have here today, part of that. One of the other things, and this is kind of a big driver behind this, we do a lot of scheduling and shared calendaring and contacts and things with the county, so Decatur County, all employees over there as well. We are in the same boat, I'm going before both of their boards next Tuesday with this exact same proposal. Our intent to be, you know, if, if we get the approval from both city and county is to build this as a common system. So all city and county government will show up in the same directory, be able to share files securely, schedule resources with each other, calendaring, just kind of all of the benefits. Not that we all sit around and chat with each other all day, but instant messaging, video conferences. Can't tell you how many times, you know, been in a conversation with someone and it'd be really nice to click a button and turn that into a video conference, or here, let me share my screen with you and show you. All of those things just inherently become just fluid and part of the process if we're on the same system and utilizing, you know, these new products. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Are there any particular questions?
These, I, I do admit, these features in different departments are widely requested. So there's a lot of discussion about transfer of files from the police department to the courts. And currently, I think we do that via thumb drive.
Some via thumb drive, some physically go in a packet that's driven across the street. Part of, one of the big issues we have there is scheduling between the courts, the jail, the attorneys, the police officers. We've had several issues with trying to do those kinds of things. We're, we're sending calendar invites that get added to a shared calendar, but that's, doesn't include the attorney, that doesn't include the officer. That's been a, a large issue we've had within the county and within, between the city and the county. So that's actually one of the really big pain points we've had. But just general shared calendaring has been, we have some departments using their own Google calendar to try to get, you know, get by with what we can't provide for them with our own systems. So we've, we intended to look at this last year. Obviously, there were a lot of moving parts and things happening. And we still had some time in our Zoom products and things that were covered last year via a grant. So it wasn't as, as much of a push, you know, that's a very small amount in this, but still didn't want to, you know, waste, waste any money. But we have spent pretty much the last six months really going through the, the two different products and looking at what would be the best and most efficient. I kind of mentioned it in, in the memo, but some departments are currently paying for this, a lighter version of this today. And it varies from, we have licenses that we use on certain computers and we, all of our other computers have an old version from two thousand and ten that was paid for many administrations ago that we're just limping by with. Other departments are full in, pay for it for, you know, all devices, all computers. So we kind of have a hodgepodge and it's made it very difficult when we swap out a computer or a new employee comes in, we're trying to set up their, their Microsoft Office and their email and oh, well, that was paid for with so-and-so's credit card on this Hotmail account under this MSN sign-in. And it's like, you know, coming in, at the backside of this, trying to get all of this figured out for everywhere has been extremely difficult. So this was kind of a, took a little longer to get together once we really decided that we needed to make a change. But I wanted to make sure before we came and asked anyone for any finances and, you know, that we had our, our ducks in a row and made sure it was what we need to do.
So the licensing would be one as a whole?
Yes.
City and county?
Each paying their respective portions. It's similar, we do it currently, actually today, the email licensing, we pay for it at an aggregate as a whole, because we get a higher discount. We, we meet minimum commit thresholds by adding the city and county together. So we already do as kind of the best cost savings we can today. When we purchase the licensing, I purchase it once and then the city and the county each pay their portions. It's a, it's a better deal for the city, because without the county, their price per user would be higher.
Now, would this be something you would put in your budget from year one out or?
So we're having kind of larger discussions about that, hopefully for budget year next year. We've discussed, you know, there are several things that are in the mayor's budget or Board of Works budget on this side of the house, on the commissioner's budget, on the county side, that are yearly recurring costs, but they were not fifty-fifty since they were either computer-based or employee account-based. We didn't put those in my budget since it was purely fifty-fifty. But we've kind of discussed adding additional light items to our budget that's either fully funded or creating a separate budget within the city specifically for these things, for IT.
Just like C somewhere is a little bit of a pain.
Right, right, yeah. It's, it's, it's kind of difficult now, you know, we have kind of some rough numbers and we have a process between AV's office and the auditor's office to shift things back and forth. We need to do joint payments like this, but.
You mentioned in your memo the G one license?
Yes.
That you mentioned that could be used for other individuals. Why is it, because the G, like you said, the G one license gives you everything above, but instead of having the office products, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, setter, now on each computer, it's now, it's a web-based, but still available. Why cannot all users utilize the G one and still function properly?
So you, the best way to describe it, the web versions are kind of a light version, just to be able to access and open documents. You, you can do quite a bit in them, but they're not the full running on your device. Internet access is required at every moment to be able to use it. It's very similar, I don't know if you've used like Google Sheets or Google Doc, it's, it's similar to that. The biggest, it, it doesn't have near the storage and some of the other features under the covers. I, I put on there specifically, not the office, just to kind of show the pricing. But it's, it's, it's mainly geared for, you know, you have a very large, you know, we'll say thousands of employee organizations where ten percent, twenty percent of them just need email access, but they need to be able to access documents that may be sent out or may be able to, may need to modify a spreadsheet occasionally here and there. It's a way to keep them within your organization, but not pay the full, giving them access to put Microsoft Office on five devices that they own, a tablet or a computer. It's just a lighter way of doing that. And that is definitely something, you know, that, that's why I put in here, you know, that is an option for some. Honestly, I don't know how many, what that looks like. The city and the county today, most employees that would kind of fall into that realm currently don't have email. So we're not really providing, you know, we don't have that solution. If we had sixty or seventy employees that basically worked out outdoors, out in the field all the time, never, we don't have individual computers for them, where they use one or two shared computers, that would be the perfect example. It keeps them in our system, keeps them with email, all part of the group's list, the messaging component, but we're not paying for that computer license for them to put that onto five devices.
And this is roughly last of the G three license.
We, we actually looked at the, the G one license for a couple of departments where they have shared computers, but there are, you know, say thirty employees that use the same five computers. In that sense, you know, there's a, a cost, significant cost difference there. The issue you run into is with the G one licenses and web-based access, they lose quite a bit of storage capability, which may or may not be an issue depending on department, but without having the individual licensing to be able to sign in and use that product on the computer, they're stuck using the web version, which may work for some and may not work for others, just depending on the, the department. So that is something we are going to look at across the city and the county as we do this. But until we really start that, you know, I, I wanted to kind of give the, the highest cost, the highest ask to you, but hopefully, you know, be able to utilize that some.
Okay, explain this breakdown cost to me.
So we separated out, and, and maybe I'll let the mayor comment a little bit more on this, the utilities licensing, because I believe different budgets and how that is funded.
Because the water company operates as a standalone business and so does the wastewater company. They pay their expenses for everything. And so the other one is the general city, street, fire, police, city operations. But that's why there's the difference, so that what you would see in the budget process, budget conversation is the top line and then the utility. budget conversation is the top line and then the utilities pay the utilities. The general fund isn't expected to make up the utility cost. I think this is a very needed component. We've been struggling with our email system for two, three, the three years I've been here. The other features are requested and asked for and desired. Chief McNeely, before he left between our meetings, said that to offer my, offer the chief's support for this project. So I'll pass that along. Amy, we have, we can, we can absorb this this year. We found some funds that are still available from the last project that I think we can transfer to this. And then we also have some funds left in the GO bond that were for fire station and guns and things that we purchased in that whole list that come in under budget. So there are, there's money available this year to cover. We don't need to do an additional appropriation. And then we would work it into the budget for next year. Your question about the budget is something we have been talking about for a couple of months about how to best display that. Because we do have items that we pay to the county that are 50/50, Josh's salary being one of them, but like this isn't. So we don't need to.